A call to order the Lynchburg Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, August 23rd, 2023. The first order of business is the approval of the July 26th, 2023 minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? Do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye opposed. Okay, the next order of business is the following new business where we will consider the petition of Central Health, Inc. to amend the future land use map from low-density residential to community commercial and to rezone approximately two and forty-seven hundredths acres at 759 Leesville Road from R1 Low Density Residential District to B5C General Business District Conditional to allow the construction of a parking area associated with a medical facility.
And I will be accusing myself for this one. I have family, it works there, so.
Okay.
Thank you, members of Planning Commission. The subject property is located at 759 Leesville Road and contains approximately two and a half acres. The subject property is approximately sixteen acres total, but the 2.5 is located within the city and is the portion that is proposed for rezoning as part of this petition. The land is currently undeveloped. The purpose of the petition is to rezone from R1 Low Density Residential District to B5C General Business District Conditional and amend the future land use map from Low Density Residential to Community Commercial to allow the construction of an entrance and parking area to serve the rehabilitation facility and behavioral hospital that will be built on the portion of the property within Campbell County. The existing R1 district was established in 1978. The comprehensive plan currently recommends a low-density residential use for the area. These areas are characterized by single-family detached housing at densities of up to four dwelling units per acre. In addition to residential uses, they may also include public or institutional uses compatible in scale with single-family residential homes. The petitioner proposes to amend the future land use map to community commercials to support the development of the medical facilities. Community commercial areas contain retail, personal service, entertainment, and restaurant uses that draw customers from at least several neighborhoods, the city, or the region. They also contain clusters of businesses, often at major intersections and shopping centers. Office, research, and development, and technology development are also permitted in community commercial areas as long as traffic and other impacts to the community are mitigated. Hospitals are permitted use in the B5 General Business District. The voluntarily submitted proffer should adequately limit impacts from the proposed development as the proffer prohibits many of the more intense uses in the B5 district. While the proposed rezoning and future land use map amendment do represent sort of a change or shift from the low-density residential use that we currently have designated, the change would allow the area to develop more closely to forthcoming development in Campbell County, where majority of the property is located. The surrounding area is also designated for commercial uses within the county. The proposed development should have limited impact on the surrounding neighborhood based on the proffer, which states that many of the more intense land uses in the B5 district will not be permitted. The city's technical review committee has reviewed this petition and comments were minor and would be addressed prior to site plan approval. The planning division recommends approval of the future land use map amendment and rezoning with the proffer. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Is there...who is here to speak on behalf of the petition?
Good evening. My name is Seth Francis, and I'm with Crunk Engineering, and I'm a part of the engineering team for this project. You know, I think that was a great job captivating what we're proposing here, so I'd like to take this time to answer any questions that you guys may have.
We'll get to that. So if you have nothing else to say, if you could sign in for us, please, right there. But we will...I'm sure we will come back and have some questions for you. And you may just want to stay there unless somebody else comes forward. Is there anybody else here to speak in favor of the petition? Is there someone speaking in opposition? So at this point, I guess we'll close the hearing, and we will ask questions. So Commissioners, do you all have any questions?
The amendment, the attachments for the proffer.
I've got a copy here if you'd like to see it.
Yes.
Give me just a second to...and then let me check one thing because there's one of these that's not marked off.
Just while checking that, essentially, the proffer is a list of land uses that would normally be permitted in the B5 that they are saying would not be allowed in this case. So they've taken those uses off the table to allow for the hospital as well as some more limited uses.
So it looks like a big list. What uses are still there besides hospital use? So I guess hospital use means they can build a small hospital on there or some type of medical building.
The current layout shows the building itself actually being across the city-county boundary, so the hospital itself currently is not planned to be in the Lynchburg portion of the property, but because there is access taken from the Lynchburg Street that is consistent with other zoning determinations that we've made, if you're going to use it that way and it's partially in, partially out, then it needs to be permitted in the city as well. So there is a pretty long list of uses. It's the last thing in your packet if you're trying to find it, but essentially, this is straight from the zoning ordinance, and we struck the things that they have specifically proffered out. So things that are still allowed, generally, it's the less intense uses: office uses, health and personal care, bank, real estate office, research and development, professional offices. Things that are not allowed are things like antique shops, flea markets, beer, wine, and liquor stores, cash for gold, pawn shops, that sort of thing. No self-storage facilities, no transit-type services, no taxi services, these sorts of things. So I don't want to exhaust what's in and what's out, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are specifics.
So right on the other side of the line in Campbell County, is that zoning?
Yes.
Business?
To create kind of a one-for-one map, and of course, it's not one-for-one because their zoning and our zoning aren't exactly the same, and their flume and our flume aren't exactly the same. But essentially, you see here, this is the Campbell County zoning, and the red is their sort of, they call it "general commercial." So that subject parcel is labeled up there at the corner of Compton Way and Leesville Road. So there's the city portion where it's low-density residential, county portion where pretty much everything in the area is commercial. And likewise, with their future land use map, the brown area is designated for urban development area, which is essentially an area designated for growth versus ours, which is low-density residential.
How much...I'm just curious how much communication goes on between their planning and, you know, team and you guys when you think through whether or not to approve something like this?
Well, so I did speak with their zoning administrator about this, just to confirm that what they are proposing in the county is already by right. As we get into the comp plan, I think this is a good example of why we need to talk about these things regionally. But yes, so I think one thing to think about is regardless of the action that is taken with this zoning, the zoning in Campbell County is already sort of in place for this. So thinking ahead, if this zoning does not change, where does that leave this low-density residential piece next to this more intense general commercial piece with almost no transitional zoning between the two?
So that's kind of my biggest issue right there is that, short-term, we're really talking about a parking lot. So whatever runoff, you know, would be your major impact, I suppose. And then longer-term, exactly what you said, if the hospital goes up and that, and the zoning around the hospital stays, then we've created like a low-density residential canal, if you will, that we probably address in the conference as a plan in some fashion anyway. You know, it's a rhetorical slash speculative question, but I would think that it'd be irresponsible not to as we start that study here in a week or so. So, you know, really, I mean, how would you access it if that wasn't there? I mean, obviously, you've thought about other stuff, but, I mean, you'd have to drive all the way around to get to the hospital or to get to that facility. Is that correct?
Are you talking about as far as vehicular?
If the parking lot wasn't there.
Oh, so...
Access from Lynchburg's side would be...
They do have the frontage on Compton and...
Is that Simon's Run, I think? Yeah.
That's right. And we're proposing access. I don't know if you can switch back to the point there. So as you can see, kind of on the left-hand side, sorry, now playing south, so we have a connection on the Simon's Run to the south, and then a future connection, which would be a part of the behavioral health facility. That connection to Leesville would come through as part of the behavioral health project.
I mean, to me, these are, you know, the uses that you're talking about are, you know, underserved in Lynchburg. I mean, I would be in support of having something like this in place, and I think making it as available as possible is probably the right thing to do.
Do you all have any other comments?
I mean, this is one of those...
Yeah. I mean, I, you know, I think we have fewer and fewer vacant lots in Lynchburg that are in R1, so my first inclination was, you know, why change it from an R1? But if you've got a hospital going right next to it or some kind of medical, you know, building, you're probably not going to have houses wanting to be built there anyway.
Well, that's just frankly, and I don't know how candid I should be, but temporary flawed planning. I mean, I don't know how...do we...I mean, this was zoned for urban development, and we've got another space directly across the street that's low-density.
I'm sorry. Sorry, you steal it. I mean, my thought would be too is that, you know, as we struggle with this question about how are we going to incorporate different elements within the city, I mean, you think about where our hospitals are now. I mean, there's residential areas right outside the bounds, if you will, and we've got a number of situations where we've, you know, where those functions are integrated. And I mean, there could be a time when that would be something that would be desirable. You know, I don't...I mean, I'm not trying to open that question now, but I'm just saying it's not a deal killer, if you will, in my mind, just because I think that's going to be...that's going to be a struggle, and that's what planning is going to struggle with, you know, in the broadest sense going forward. And I, you know, I think this is forcing the hand a little bit maybe, but I just, I can't see how denying it isn't going to solve the problem.
No, but I think the strategic planning for the future and how these two spaces, per se, integrate.
We're going to have to talk about that.
Yeah.
I agree with you completely.
I'm curious, the building that's going up in Campbell County, is that a done deal or is it a proposal? Like, I mean, or do you have a timeframe?
Yeah, we're currently in the design development stage right now, and, you know, we're still working out some of the details with the grading and with the layout before we actually make a formal submission into Campbell County. Now, we have already had like a, you know, pre-application meeting with the county, and the county is very supportive of the project. And, you know, by all means, as far as the county's perspective, it seems to be favorable for the county right now, and we plan to go forward in the next couple of weeks carrying that submission along for actually both. A CON was approved for the behavioral health recently, too, so now there's a certificate of need issued by the state for both of these facilities. So it is needed in the area, and it, you know, the big difference here really, as far as the facilities, it seems like they are definitely going to happen with Campbell County. And so, you know, really, I guess if the, you know, rezoning was voted down to not, the difference would be that, you know, we wouldn't have parking or things located. We would try to find a solution on the Campbell County side that would make things more difficult, but, you know, we're not planning to do anything on the city of Lynchburg jurisdiction of this site that would be anything more than parking. We plan to plant this area, too, to kind of screen it back, and, you know, in our opinion, you know, we think this is a pretty good transitional use because Campbell County's commercial use, it allows for a lot more heavier, you know, more dense, you know, industries than what inpatient rehab facility and a behavioral health hospital would be. So, you know, we're trying to be good stewards of the property and be respectful of the city of Lynchburg and Campbell County, and we think that this project does a good job on creating a transition from residential to what could be, you know, heavier commercial within Campbell County and doing it in a way that's something that actually services the residents that live in Lynchburg. So the people that live nearby this facility, if they got in a car wreck and needed, you know, rehabilitation for an injury, you know, this facility would be close to the residents. I mean, that's one way to look at it. I think I answered your question. If you have any more, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Any other comments or questions?
Sure. I'll add just a quick comment. Those who know me on this board know that I'm not a big supporter of rezoning single-family housing residential in certain parts of the city. In this case, this isn't replacing it with a higher-density residential, which to me creates significant and has been creating significant problems. This is something that is needed and apparently has been approved, and these type of things, at least in my view, Tom may be able to back this up. I see him sitting back there. I approve that hospitals and medical facilities don't necessarily devalue residential properties. So personally, I would be supportive of doing this change.
Okay, if we have no other comments or questions, does anybody want to make a motion?
I would move that we accept the proposal as presented with the proffers. Oh, I'm sorry. I would move that we approve the motion as presented with the proffers detailed in the proposal.
Second?
All in favor? Aye opposed? Okay, it passes, and you will head to City Council, so good luck, and thank you for coming in. Rachel, are you going to get the boys? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
It's like sticking way up in the mic. But he'll turn it on when you'd start talking. The next order of business is the petition of Timberlake Investments, LLC to amend the future land use map from neighborhood commercial to medium-density residential and for a conditional use permit at 3146 and 3150 Ward's Ferry Road to allow the construction of a 24-unit apartment complex with associated parking and a B1 limited business district.
Good evening, members of Planning Commission. The property is two parcels consisting of approximately 1.6 acres. The property is currently zoned B1 Limited Business District and recommended for neighborhood commercial uses on the city's future land use map. Neighborhood commercial uses are primarily intended for things such as office, retail, personal service, small restaurants that are really scaled to be compatible with and serve their immediate neighborhoods. The proposed medium-density residential district, these, or I'm sorry, medium-density land use, these areas are intended for things such as single-household duplexes, townhomes with densities of up to 12 units per acre. So the issue with the requested land use is wrong unit type. They're requesting apartments, and wrong density in that it's only 1.6 acres. Recommended density is 12 units, and they're proposing 24 units. While the unit type would be allowed upon approval of a CUP in the B1 district, the approval would really limit the future use of that property for any commercial or office-type development. What really is the main reason for our recommendation of denial is the city did a study of Ward's Ferry Road back in 2014, which was adopted by council. This plan specifically recommended that the study forecast be revised if development policies in that corridor were changed to increase dwelling units. The issue with Ward's Ferry Road is that if increased density is approved along that corridor, it may result in the need to widen Ward's Ferry Road, and the city just does not have the right of way with to do that. We also, we already know that that road sees a significant amount of traffic and increasing densities along that corridor, whether it be one time, maybe you get away with it, but cumulative could really cause an issue. And if we had to widen that road, we'd be taking structures to do that. The city is already initiating recommendations of that plan. The city is currently designing with VDOT funding a roundabout at Harvard Street or CVCC Boulevard and Ward's Ferry Road. The city has plans to construct intersection improvements at Atlanta Avenue and bike and pedestrian improvements at Simon's Run and Ward's Ferry, starting fiscal year '25 out to fiscal year '27. So really, because of the, there was no traffic study required nor submitted, the potential for traffic accidents coming out of Copley Place, planning divisions concerned with where Copley comes out, right at the turn lanes on Ward's Ferry Road, we just did not feel comfortable recommending approval of the petitions.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Who is here to speak on behalf of this petition?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of Commission. My name is Norm Walton. I'm with Perkins &amp; Morrison, and I'm representing the developer. This is a kind of a complicated request in that Ward's Ferry is developing, like Mr. Martin said, but there's also a mixture of uses throughout Ward's Ferry. There are lower-density, single-family detached, there are duplexes, there are townhouses, there are apartments, institutional right across the road from this, and so there's a number of uses in this area, and we feel like this is not really an intrusion or an exception to anything that's already there. I understand what Mr. Martin said about the development and the widening of Ward's Ferry. Now, this is in a section of Ward's Ferry that has been recently improved. We do feel that even though that we're maybe beyond the limits of the medium density, that this project is not that dense of a project, it's 24 units at this location. We do not feel like that's an overreach of the density requirements in this area. If that is an issue, we'd be more than willing to table this project and come back and recommend a higher flume amendment than the medium density that's been proposed. The plan did go through TRC, and the comments from TRC from staff were pretty minimal, and we will address those during a site plan. This is the second time we've proposed a development here on this property. We first looked at townhouses here and just could not get it to work for a number of reasons. You know, it was less units for the townhouses, but with townhouses, the footprint for the building and the parking, actually, we were requesting to take or have some of the city right-of-way, because the city right-of-way for the ramp for 501 is pretty wide, and we were asking for some of that property to be transferred for private development and move the detention pond that was installed for the Ward's Ferry widening. That just all did not work. It just became too complex, and so we came back with this development and this proposal as we felt like it's more feasible. We did want to point out that per code, there's a 50-foot buffer adjacent to the single-family detached that's there along the adjoining side street, and I think Mr. DeWitt would like to discuss the marketability and the feasibility of this property being commercial.
Can you sign?
Oh, certainly. Sorry to forget that.
Thank you. Yep.
Thank you.
I'm Tom DeWitt, and I wanted to give you some background on this property because we've been involved with it for some time, and several other Realtors have been. It's been on and off the market since 2009. I wasn't the only Realtor, but I've had it for a while myself. Several other Realtors have had it. I think obviously tried to do a good job of marketing it as B1. Nobody came to the table. This property was eventually auctioned off, and so that's why, you know, we felt like, hey, it should be available to do something a little different. Again, we had a lot of time spent marketing of the property, and Fire Chief, I don't know if you remember, former Fire Chief Anderson, he was one of the owners in Charlie Holloway. I've known those guys a long time, and they would tell you that, you know, just, hey, in all those years, it just seemed nobody came to us to use it for B1. And B1 is one of those uses that's, you know, mostly offices, and, you know, it can be sort of hit or miss on stuff, and sometimes, you know, a block off of the main drag is too far, and I would submit to you that maybe this one is. The one project that's there right now has a vacancy right now. The one project that's there right now has a vacancy right now, and, you know, as you know, COVID did a number to office-type use in general, a lot more people working from home and that kind of thing, so, you know, that's sort of the background on it and why I think it should be suited to something else. I was noting on the surrounding area report, in the Planning Commission report, there were 11 projects mentioned that were rezonings or things that were adapted and stuff, and out of those 11, six of those were institutional. Three were with Heritage High School, two were with the Nazarene Church, one was with the Marshall Lodge, and all the others were involved some form of multifamily projects, duplexes, townhouses, apartments, and there was one that was not mentioned, which is sort of strange, because it's the latest one that was done, and in 2017, we were part of a rezoning for a group that got 70 apartments, not townhouses, apartments approved right there beside Woodman of the World. And again, I think that was an apt use and a proper use, but the, thinking about the density here, while 19, 24 may sound like way more than the 19 or whatever that supposedly is allowed, then they have, we have, excuse me, they have five times the parking, we've got one-fifth of the land, so we're still in pretty close proximity to that code, and what it involves is, the other project is all three-bedroom units, where ours is a mix of one- and two-bedroom units. We're not looking at doing club houses, because we're looking at more of a professional-type person that we're marketing to, not college students per se. Not saying some college students wouldn't be there, but I'm saying that's not the market. Where they went strictly after college students, and so they had to provide almost 248 parking spaces, I believe it was, so they've got five times the parking that we would have on our project, so we feel like this is very, very appropriate. You know, if the unit number itself was a problem, you know, we could probably switch to three-bedroom units or some other kind of thing to get that number down or under that threshold that we're talking about, if that's a big thing, but anyway, I guess what I'd like to submit to you is a couple of things. One is a $2.5 or $3 million apartment project here, I think would do a lot more revenue for the city than what one or two office buildings might do there. There's seemed to be little or no demand for the B1. I don't think we have much opposition. If we have some, I won't say there's not, but I haven't heard of any, and so I think we're well buffered against Adams Drive, we're right there against the highway, we've got the school across the street, don't see that there's much reason to have much opposition, so I'd hope you would take all that into account and approve our project. Got any questions, I'm happy to...
Thank you.
Do you have any questions, Walton?
Yeah, well, we might call you back up. Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anyone speaking in opposition? Please come forward, and if you wouldn't mind signing your name right there, thank you.
My name is Atul Gupta, I live on 101 Adams Drive. To provide you some context of what Mr. DeWitt's bulletin board was, advertising board was on that property for a long time, never got sold. When he said it came for auction, the minimum bid was $50,000. Somebody paid $90,000 for that little piece of property. One of them up for rezoning is right next to our land. For me, it'll be best in my interest to ask you to rezone it, because I got 1.6 acres of land sitting right beside it. So, if you rezone this, you're setting up a precedence for me to make a $200,000 property into a $2 million property. You see what I'm saying, purely from a business perspective? But I'm standing here to oppose this, because this is a single-family neighborhood. If you drive on Ward's Ferry Road, right now, you can see all these apartments these guys are siding, and they don't live on Ward's Ferry Road. You need to ask them, do any one of you live on Ward's Ferry Road? Do you encounter the traffic day in, day out, out of those apartment complexes? You build those apartment complexes, these kids have difficulty just coming in and out of the Ward's Ferry Road right now. You've got Heritage High School right beside it, you look at that sidewalk, these people are driving at 60 miles an hour, and our kids are crossing those sidewalks. So, it'll be a nightmare to add any more apartments on that zone, unless you build two-lane roads with a lot of red lights in between. So, that 3150, I don't know if it's the right number, right adjoining my property, where is the ingress and out for that piece of land? You gotta come through 97 Adams Drive to go there. So, that island is sitting there, and that's the reason these properties were not sold. And then in between, you've got a water stream, where there is a, sort of, you know, the rainwater goes through those streams, and if you build houses on both sides, what effect will it have on that? So, there's not much, it doesn't make sense to build more apartments in that area. I mean, these guys can come, and railroad, they have not, they said there is no opposition. Nobody has talked to me. I live right next door. You know, where will there be opposition if nobody knows? You tell me if you're going to go get married, and nobody knows that you're running away with a girl, nobody will come to the opposition. So, there's a fact to it, there's no opposition, because you've got a 455 number. I'm not going to bother Mr. Martin to say I'm opposed to it, but the common sense tells you, why do you need more apartments when the infrastructure is not there? The infrastructure, the basic road, if you turn from Timberlake to Ward's Ferry, it's a nightmare right now. Going from Ward's Ferry into Timberlake, there's a line going all the way up to my street many times. I had cars running from Heritage High into my property. I cut the tree, but I kept it a little bit higher so that they won't come into the house. So, building these apartments, whether the number of units is less or more, is not feasible. Thank you, the red light is on. Thank you.
Would the presenter like to offer a rebuttal?
Yeah, I actually own a piece of property that fronts Ward Road, Ward's Ferry Road. My son lives in the townhomes just down from this property, so I'm very familiar with the traffic patterns there in issues with ingress and egress. Most of the time, I don't have any issues coming in and out of the townhouses. A couple of times during the day, like most places in the city, to where there's peak traffic issues, and there are times you have to wait a little while to get onto Ward's Ferry Road, but most times not. So, I actually do have property there, and so I'm very familiar with the dynamics of Ward's Ferry Road. Also, there is infrastructure, water and sewer is there, so serving this development will not be an issue at all. And as with any other project with the city, we will design, you know, the site to meet the 2B criteria as far as stormwater management. There's not a pond placement shown on this plan, and more than likely, it's going to be underground detention underneath the parking lot. So, it won't be an above-ground pond, but stormwater management will be addressed with the development. So, with that, I would offer, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Is there, I guess, anybody else to speak in opposition? So, we'll close the public hearing, and commissioners can ask questions to whoever.
I've got a question. You say your son lives down the road a little ways in the, in their townhomes, but that's a two-lane road down there, and up here, you've got five or five lanes, and I don't know how you'd ever get out of there. Is this going to be right in, right out, or is it gonna, somebody gonna try to make a left turn out of there?
Well, we can't restrict that, because Copley Drive is a public street. So, our access is off of Copley. So, that's an interesting point, but we can't restrict the movement on Copley. Now, it kind of goes back to what I said earlier, you know, there are, it's like every other busy street in the city of Lynchburg, there are traffic issues, but most of the time, the traffic issues are a 20-minute problem. So, if you come in and out of Copley Drive at 9:00 AM, probably not going to have any issues at all. If you're 7:35 to 7:55, you may have issues turning right, oh, excuse me, left. It depends on, you know, if there are professional people living there, most of those people are probably going to go right to get to Timberlake Road, then to get to the expressway and other points of the city more efficiently. That's what I would think. But we did not do a traffic study, so I can't really answer that. As Mr. Martin said earlier, a traffic study wasn't required due to the size of the project.
And I suppose if they really wanted to turn left and couldn't, they could turn right and go down the expressway and get back on Ward's Road if that's where they were headed?
Most places you could get to exactly to go down the expressway, get on Ward's Road, to get where you would come out from Atlanta or the other end of Ward's Road, exactly.
I just wanted to ask for clarification. The letter that you submitted to Tom Martin, you indicated that the CUP is for 2.85 acres, but from what Tom said, we're talking about 1.612 acres?
Did I not correct the letter, Tom?
Obviously not, and what was sent to her.
It is 1.6 acres.
Okay. So, it's definitely, okay. So, the recommendation is 12 units per acre, so with 24, just clarifying that it's over, definitely over that stipulation or the limitation that's recommended?
I would add, in fact, correct me if I'm wrong on this, Tom, that whether it's B1 or medium density, this development wouldn't fit either one of those zoning requirements. Right? Is that correct? Okay.
Sorry.
They're proposing a zoning change to put this, well, for future use of this, but whether it's B1 or a medium density, the development they're proposing does not meet the criteria for either one of those zoning.
Well, the apartments are allowed by conditional use permit in the B1 district, which is why they're here. The thing about conditional use permits is it allows the Planning Commission, Council, and staff to ultimately look at site-by-site basis, and while apartments in a B1 zone might be perfectly appropriate in one part of the city, it may not be in another part. After looking at all the facts, staff just didn't feel like it was appropriate at this location.
Actually, I don't live very far from here, and I can say that that intersection cluster off of 501 headed up Timberlake is an accident magnet. There's a lot going on there. Ward's Ferry, as Thomas pointed out, is a two-lane road, and not having the rights of way to expand that is a serious issue, especially if you want to put multifamily units in there. Not even addressing the issues of putting more multifamily units in there, which, in my view, is part of what's creating the traffic problems along Timberlake Road. That said, currently, it wouldn't meet the zoning requirement or the proposed zoning requirements. We don't have the right of way to put, to widen that out, to put a suitable kind of traffic flow in there, and it's a hazardous intersection as it is. I'm trying to understand what would, without, what is the benefit of putting this in here under the current circumstances?
Well, the land either stays vacant, it does not get used, or, you know, this is the first viable project, as Mr. DeWitt mentioned, in 15 years of the project, property being marketed, that looks like could come to fruition. I do want to go back on the density thing. So, the density is not a zoning issue, it's more of a future land use map issue, right, Mr. Martin? And so, instead of, so the B1 is fine for the density, we just made a mistake and should have asked for a higher density for the future land use map and not the medium density. I just want to make sure that that's clear. The zoning is fine, it's just a future land use map that's the problem, so. But going back to the question you asked, I mean, it's just a matter of the utilization of the land, and does it remain vacant, or, you know, since this is the first, again, viable project in the last 15 years, do we allow it to go forward? As I mentioned, when I first started, you know, my presentation, it's not, most of them I bring to you guys aren't easy, and this one's not easy either. It's a lot of dynamics, there's a lot of things going on. We understand the traffic issues in Ward's Ferry, but there's also a housing demand in the city, so it's a dynamic problem, so.
Do any of the other units that are along this road, just down the way, with the, looks like there's apartments and...
It's a mix of everything, the single-family detached, it's duplexes, it's townhomes. Across Timberlake at Logan's Lane, there are apartments, and as Mr. DeWitt said, Jamestown Development developed apartments adjacent to Woodman of the World, so it's a mixed bag of uses all along Ward's Ferry.
I recognize Mr. DeWitt's comment about, you know, it being on the market and nobody, you know, has come up with anything else, and, you know, it's vacant, so I understand that and agree. What I'm struggling with is the issues at hand, and, you know, changing the flume is something that we don't love doing anyway, so throw in a couple of other pretty big issues, like the egress and ingress, and the, you know, just the density issue of not only are we changing the flume, but we're going to take it outside of the recommendation of the flume. So, that's what I'm struggling with, even though I really, you know, understand why you want to do this and where it would be, you know, possibly a good thing. We are in need of more housing, for sure, and rentals are very popular.
Yes, right now, they are. And, you know, I think that's kind of a question that probably all localities struggle with, you know, comprehensive plans and future land use maps. You know, is it the governing body that dictates what goes where, or is it the market? You know, so, and that's always a debate kind of that goes along, you know, who's driving the development of any given area?
And you have just the notion that, yes, we need more housing, but we hear so many complaints of, especially around the Timberlake Road area, of just more and more and more and more apartments and townhomes and condos and just the traffic and all of that, and I feel like there's, there's, there are many citizens that just don't, are not excited about that, and, but, you know, we want to grow, we want more people to come to Lynchburg, so how do you do that without, how do you do that without providing housing? So, it is, it's a struggle for me.
All struggle with that same dilemma along the 221 corridor, as well as the 460 Timberlake Road corridor. So, you know, there was a recent rezoning on Timberlake Road for townhouses that I was involved with, that was successful, and we had the same conversation then. You know, how do, you know, people that have lived there for 50 years are very upset of the increase in traffic, but in Campbell County, that's where the infrastructure is to allow for these developments, and it's a tough question all the way around, but, you know, Ward's Ferry seems like over the last, especially 10 years, has, because of the proximity of schools, has been a target in where a lot of the development has occurred. Again, it's market-driven, you know, so that market is expanding because of its availability to, you know, Liberty University and other schools, and it's convenient for that, so I think the market is driving higher densities to come down the Ward's Ferry corridor.
Interesting discussion that...
We've heard that a lot.
We've heard that a lot. The market is driving. But we've also had several proposals come up, get approved, and then nothing happens to them for the land to be relisted. Um, you know, so, you, I think this is, it's pretty interesting that we just looked at a project on the other side of the expressway that was also very similar. Um, and, and I supported that a lot because of the mix around it and because of the distance from the road. Uh, and I got, I got feedback from people who were disappointed that I did. Um, you know, I, I think that one of the things that I consider is the big shift from a business use to residential. I, I know that this hasn't been used, but I also know that there's a lot of land in Lynchburg that has sat unused for a long time, and then all of a sudden, something happens. And so I would be inclined not to support this, not just because of that, but because of where it is and its proximity to Timberlake and that intersection. I do drive that a lot. And it just seems like you're trying to stick a foot too big into a smaller shoe. You know, that's kind of how it feels to me. Um, so, so I do think, you know, I, I'm a, generally a supporter of density. You know, that's kind of been my, my record. But, um, in this, I'd be a little less inclined to support it based on location and, and the lot and the use of the land and, but actually possibly future use.
Tom, can you elaborate on the, the fact that you talked about in 2014? Can you elaborate on, um, what can't happen as far as widening the road, especially in that area?
There, there's just not enough right-of-way. Um, either side you went, you'd be getting into people's property and be, you'd have to take homes if you were to widen the road out. And so you'd be destroying neighborhoods and properties.
And widening the road is just, in your, is just in your opinion, something that would, if this development were to happen there, that, that would, that would alleviate, that would alleviate some of the traffic issues? But, but since we can't do that?
Well, the premise of the study, the, the premise of that recommendation was, they looked at the existing zoning on the road and accounted for that in their traffic projections. And what they said is, is okay, if you kind of maintain the zoning that you have, the land uses that you have, with these recommended improvements, improvements at Atlanta and Harvard, it should be okay. But if you start changing your land use policies and start doing things that start to increase densities, then you're probably going to end up having to widen the road. That's what we're trying to prevent.
Okay. Does anybody else have any comments or questions?
I guess my issue is, you know, I appreciate everything you said, and I appreciate the mark. I agree completely with, with what, what you talked about as being, as being options. But one of the things that we haven't talked about is Ward's Ferry Road has gotten to be a problem just on the face of it because people are trying to dodge Ward's Road. Um, and I think, um, that traffic has only increased with the amount of development that's taken on up and down Ward's Ferry Road. And I'm also concerned about the fact that it's right there, you know, where school's getting out. Um, and I, I don't feel like it's something that, that I feel comfortable with. And with that as background, I'd like to go ahead and, um, I'm not sure how to do this, except the planning division's recommendation to deny the, um, the petition.
Do we have a second?
Second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So the motion has been denied. Um, you still, obviously, you're going to take it in front of city council and, um, and, and present it to them. So this will just be our recommendation. So, but I appreciate you coming in. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Is there any other business? Do we have anything on our, uh, we have a meeting coming up?
Yes.
You want to talk about that?
So next week, a week from tomorrow, on the 31st, um, we will be having, uh, the Planning Commission and Economic Development Authority Comprehensive Plan kickoff. So I hope everyone's excited. Um, we will be at the Miller Center in the community room, which is, uh, that first room you walk in if you're coming in from the back parking lot. Um, 11:00 AM to 1:30 PM. Um, that meeting is open to the public if anyone watching wishes to attend. Um, so yeah, we look forward to engaging all of you in the comprehensive plan process. Uh, and beyond that, your next regular meeting will be September 13th. We do have items, yes, to discuss.
Well, we, do we need to be there from 11:00 to 1:30?
Yes, and lunch is provided.
The whole time?
Okay.
From where?
11:00 to 1:30. Oh, no, no.
Oh, boy.
Okay, I will come to that.
Roadkill.
For these planning...
Budgets tight.
For these meetings, um, um...
Are there, um, is there prep work or some, some resources that we should be...
Uh, so the Berkeley Group is the consultant that we have partnered with to work on the comprehensive plan. Um, they will be, they're working on materials now and sending those out. We'll be sending those out either tomorrow or Friday. Um, agenda slides, that sort of thing. There was also a kind of crash course, one sheet, what is a comprehensive plan, uh, document that I had sent out with one of the initial emails trying to schedule this. Um, I will forward that again. Um, but other than that, I mean, like I said, I just hope everyone's excited to kind of learn, uh, what, what this process is about and what they've, um, heard so far. Well, where they think we are with our current comprehensive plan. They'll be going over, uh, they call it a diagnostic, um, where they kind of evaluated our current plan against, um, you know, best practices to see the areas that we need to, to focus on to update.
And the planning process... And then the methodology of the planning process has, have those been defined? Or is this literally all about doing that as well?
Uh, so we'll be talking about the process and schedule at the meeting too, um, and talking about, you know, how we're going to engage the public to get their feedback as well, because that's going to be a huge part of this, so.
And do you expect, I'm sorry, another dumb question, but do you expect this to be a multi-year process? Or how, what's the timeline for something like this?
I think we said 18 months? 18 months. Every 10 years-ish.
Well, we, we haven't been on here for 10 years.
And I feel like, didn't we do something like this?
Well, it was a member of the comprehensive plan.
We've done plans, but not this one.
Just finish before we came on, yeah.
No, I didn't.
We did?
I did.
Well, I did, I was...
Do they review it every five years?
It's supposed to be reviewed, uh, up there.
Yeah.
Certified planning commissioner program paying off, right?
Oh, what?
Is that the certified planning commissioner program paying off?
Oh, it must be.
Photograph memory.
Rachel, there's not too much trouble. Do you think...
That document and any others can be placed on the, in a Dropbox folder?
Oh, absolutely, yes. Uh, we'll, we'll put it in the normal place, the Dropbox, as also, as well as the website where we would normally put planning commission agendas.
Yeah, there is a coplan folder already there, I think.
Uh, yes, we have a folder for, um, are you talking about the one that has all of our current plans?
Yeah. So maybe, but not in there, but underneath the planning commission folder or something, just so that we can always go back to that as we accumulate things. Thanks.
Yep.
All right, any other new business or old business to discuss? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?